The Planning Commission meetings are open to the public in person and via Microsoft Teams streaming application. All Planning Commission meetings information can be found on the Town of Monument website. Planning Commission's role is to conduct a public hearing and to make recommendations for the town council regarding land use matters in the Town of Monument. Each commissioner agrees to a nonpartial, objective, and fair review, which includes no prejudgments of the projects. Should a commissioner wish to disqualify him or herself from any conflicts of personal or financial interest in this matter before us tonight, please say so. Hearing none. For those attending tonight who wish to provide comments on agenda items, you may speak to the commission during the public comments section of the agenda. Those who attend in person will be called upon first and are asked to come to the plenum and sign in with your name and address. Those attending via Microsoft Teams will be called upon next and are asked to utilize the raise your hand option and unmute your microphone when called upon. We ask that if multiple people have the same comment, only one person speak on that same subject. Again, thank you for your attending. We will now begin in meeting with the roll call. No, we will not. I want to, I want to appoint, I need to appoint Commissioner Chad Smith as a regular member for tonight's meeting. So appointed. Now roll call, please.
Thank you. I will now begin roll call. Vice Chair Hours.
Here.
Commissioner Collins.
Here.
Commissioner Egley.
Here.
Commissioner Green.
Here.
And Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Thank you. That commits the roll call.
At this time, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, which stands for our Constitution. Our God and goodness to all.
This time we'll call for approval of the minutes.
Collins moved to approve.
Smith second.
Roll call, please.
Vice Chair Hours.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Egley.
Yes.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Roll call passes six or five. Motion approved.
At this time, I'm going to make a change to the agenda. Going to reverse items 3A and 3B and hear the Willow Springs Ranch PUD first, followed then by the Zill at Jackson Creek Parkway staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Hours. For tonight's presentation, staff will be working directly from the PC packet that was provided to you for this evening. Project name is Willow Springs Ranch. It's a preliminary final PUD major amendment number one. The key items on location, it's on the north of Baptist Road, west of Old Denver Road, east of Mitchell Avenue. Parcel numbers 712, 7110, 7102013 through 15 and 18, along with 7126203027 through 31.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. We have something on our screen and I can't. Yeah, oh yeah. Is there a way to get that off?
Thank you very much, Commissioner Green, for pointing that out. And thank you, Ray, for fixing that. The applicant is Melody Homes Incorporated. Blaine Perkins is here as representative from NES is the applicant. The address of the, the site is 218 acres. The property owner is Melody Homes. We'll go through the pieces here, vicinity map. So this is Willow Springs right here. We have Baptist Road, I-25. So it's located here on the west of I-25, north of Baptist Road. Willow Springs Ranch Development. Project entitlements that are pertinent. Background history, in March 3rd of 2008, a sketch PD plan for the Willow Springs Ranch was approved and recorded. You do not have a date for the recording. We just know that it is recorded. May 6th of 2019, Willow Springs Annexation Number One and Two was approved. It was recorded on October 3rd of 2019. In July of 2020, Willow Springs Ranch Preliminary Final PUD Site Plan was approved and recorded at 8:13 2020. That's what this PUD amendment is addressing tonight, an amendment to that recorded PUD, PUD Site Plan. In August 26, 2021, Willow Springs Ranch filing number one was approved and recorded in August. Public notice was given and mailings were done. Postings were done on site and it published in the Gazette. Project summary. In August of 2020, the Willow Springs Ranch PUD Site Plan was recorded. On the plan was a 20-foot utility easement for MVA, which was depicted within the lots, again, within the lots located along the north side of Alpine Sorrel Drive. And I will show you Exhibit 2 here in a minute. As a result, these lots were encumbered with utility easement and the overall lot sizes included the area of the easement within each lot. All the lots met the development standards for the R4 designation, which was established as being a minimum of 5,000 square feet. We'll share that in Exhibit 2. In August of 2021, the Willow Springs Ranch filing number one subdivision plat was recorded. The recorded plat addressed the MVA's easement and lots located along the north side of Alpine Sorrel Drive differently than what was depicted on the approved PUD Site Plan. Rather than the MVA easement being included within each individual lot, each lot was reduced in depth by 20 feet. So the MVA easement was contained within common area. As a result of this, the lot areas were reduced in size, including several that were reduced below the R4 development standard being a minimum of 5,000 square feet. Somewhere after the approval of the PUD Site Plan and prior to the recordation of the final plat, it was discovered that MVA could not have the easement located within the lots that were to be individually owned, which is why the plat that was submitted did not conform to the approved PUD Site Plan. The options to rectify this discrepancy between the PUD Site Plan and the plat are to either revise one or the other. As MVA cannot have the easement contained in the individual lots, it was determined the PUD Site Plan would need to be amended. The proposed amendments to the PUD are depicted on Exhibits Number 4. Upon review of the revisions proposed, the PUD staff determined it could not be proceeded as a minor amendment, but rather was considered a major PUD amendment. Staff's analysis of the compliance with the review criteria for a final PUD plan. The first criteria, the final PUD conforms to or is consistent with the preliminary PUD. Staff's finding is that the proposed PUD amendment conforms to the preliminary PUD with the exception of the amendment as proposed. Criteria number two, circulation is designed for the type of traffic generated. Safety separations from living areas, convenience access, handicap access, noise, and exhaust control through general discouraged, discouraged private internal streets may be considered where appropriate to the development. A proper institutional framework, such as a metropolitan or special district, must be established for maintenance, therefore, for the life of any private streets. All streets shall be accessible by police and fire department and other emergency vehicles for emergency purposes and to service vehicles such as trash trucks, bicycle, and pedestrian circulation. And connections shall be provided. Staff's finding was the proposed PUD amendment does not change the circulation of the site. Three, functional parks. It speaks to functional parks, open space, and trails in terms of recreation, views, density relief, convenience, function, connectivity, and optimum preservation of natural features, including trees, shrubs, wildlife habitat. Scenic areas and riparian drainage areas are provided in conformance with the comprehensive plan, the parks, trails, open space master plan, and the development standards, Chapter 1805 of this title. Staff's finding was that the proposed PUD amendment does not result in any changes to the functional parks or open space or trails. Criteria four, a variety of development and housing types and styles and densities are proposed. Mixed land use is encouraged. Staff's finding, proposed PUD amendment does not change the variety of development, housing type and styles, or densities proposed. Privacy for individuals, this is criteria number five. Families and neighbors is provided as appropriate. Staff's finding was the proposed PUD amendment does not change the privacy for individual families or neighbors. Building design in terms of orientation, criteria number six. And in regards to spacing, material, exterior color, and texture, storage, and lighting result in a quality architectural design that is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. The placement of identical or similar residential models on any two adjoining lots along the street is discouraged. Staff's finding, proposed PUD amendment does not change any elements of building design. Criteria seven, landscaping is a quality design that enhances the site and is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood as shown by amount, types, and materials used. Entrance features are encouraged. The proposed landscaping must not create maintenance problems and shall be suitable for the site and neighborhood, including plat hardness. A zerscape design that will conserve water is required. Staff's finding was that the proposed PUD amendment does not change any elements of the landscape design. Criteria number eight, adequate off-street parking will be provided. Subsection A, particularly for single-family residents in a PUD, required front yard setbacks should be established and driveways should be arranged so as to provide off-street parking therein throughout the causing parked out autos to block sidewalks. Staff's finding was the proposed PUD amendment does not change the off-street parking for the single-family residents. Criteria sub B, the town may increase or decrease the normally required number of off-street parking spaces based on a consideration of the following factors, 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. Staff's finding on the first criteria, proposed PUD amendment modifications do not justify need to revise the off-street parking spaces. Subcriteria two, staff finding proposed PUD amendment modifications do not suggest a change in probable number of vehicles owned by the residents. 3 and 4 are seen as non-applicable as number 5. Criteria number nine, the final PUD has been shown to fit within the context of the planned use pattern and roadway and utility systems of the larger surrounding area. Staff's finding is that the proposed PUD amendment does not change the land use pattern and/or the roadway and utility systems of the larger surrounding area. Upon review of the final PUD review criteria of Section 1803460 final PUD plan, staff finds this proposed PUD amendment adequately addresses the review criteria. I'm going to move now to our exhibits to help maybe better shed light on this. So Exhibit A is the existing Willow Springs Ranch Preliminary Final PUD Plan. And as you see here, there, we have these lots on the north side of Alpine Sorrel Drive. This double line, double-edged line coming through here is the MVA utility easement, 30-foot utility easement. So when this was first, PUD was first set up, that easement would encumber all of those lots. In working with MVA through the final plat process, it was determined that the EVA or the MVEA easement should be on its own. And through the final plat process that was reviewed by the town and approved, these plaits were changed and these lots were reduced along Alpine Sorrel Drive. Here is the rectifying solution that staff has worked with the applicant to provide. So Willow Springs Ranch Preliminary Final PUD Site Plan, major amendment number one. What we do is, what's been proposed is a change of the minimum lot size to 4,200 square feet. All of these lots have been adjusted to reflect that and we have the proposed MVA easement. This is all staff has for the presentation. The applicant is here and if he would like, I do believe he does have a presentation to also provide.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Blaine Perkins. I'm a project manager with NES and I'm here on behalf of D.R. Horton or Melody Homes, Inc. for the Willow Springs Ranch Prelim Final PUD Plan Major Amendment.
My apologies for the wait.
As Jeff had mentioned, this is the Willow Springs Ranch subdivision outlined in red. We are just west of the I-25 and Baptist Road interchange, north of the Forest Lake subdivision. And then to the east, we do have some storage and the current Wagon's West subdivision. And then the little blow up in the top right corner, to Jeff's point, is just the specific area within the subdivision that we are looking to amend with this application this evening. Next slide. So here is the currently approved prelim final PUD plan for Willow Springs Ranch. We are just north of about 218 acres for the whole subdivision and that's consisted of 399 lots. It is also broken up into roughly eight phases of development. And I also wanted to go ahead and introduce, as Jeff had mentioned, this 20-foot MVA easement, which is the kind of the focus for the discussion this evening. This was approved in July of 2020 and recorded at the county clerk's office in August of 2020. Next slide, please. And then just to kind of give the full picture across this whole northern boundary of Willow Springs Ranch, in red is that 20-foot MVA easement that stretches from the east boundary to the western boundary of the property. As you can see, it does encumber quite a few lots in this northern boundary. And at the time of the original application, we were looking to vacate this easement so that it was not encumbered within the lots and ultimately look at redesigning and relocating the existing infrastructure that MVA had in a, in a design effort with them. Next slide. So this, this is another picture and then again, calling out that 20-foot easement. So this is the final plat application that went in about a year after the approval and recordation of the prelim final PUD Site Plan for Willow Springs Ranch. As you can see, not all of the 20-foot MVA easement was able to be vacated through this final plat instrument. And as you can kind of see, that, that north bounding, north-south bounding street down the heart of the site is Willow Ranch Road. To the west of it, it was after we spoke with MVA, it was determined that they did not actually have any existing infrastructure within that portion of the easement. And so at the time of the final plat, that is why that portion was able to be removed from the plan set. And then this was also about the time when the initial efforts and discussions were taking place on what it would take to relocate and redesign the infrastructure that is there east of Willow Ranch Road. Through several different meetings and correspondence with them, ultimately it proved to be too tall of a task for MVA to look at relocating this and redesigning it. And so they then asked basically for the lots to be adjusted so that these were not encumbered anymore by the easement, thus shortening the lots and making them below the current minor lot or minimum lot size threshold of that R4 standard that we established with the original PUD Site Plan. Next slide. So this is the application we are presenting before you commissioners this evening. As you can see, again, the easement is highlighted in red matching that final plat that we were just looking at on the previous slide. Lots 280, starting from the west on Alpine Sorrel Drive to the east, right, contained within that clouded area, if you can see that, are the eight lots that we have adjusted to match the approved and recorded final plat application, removing the easement from the lot. In doing so, we did gain an additional open space within tract L directly behind the lots where the easement was within, in the common open area. On the original application, we had roughly about 6,000 square feet of common open space in this portion of Willow Springs Ranch. With this amendment, we are looking at closer about 6,400 square feet. So we did gain about 400 square feet of additional common area in this tract. And then also an additional width, the common open space increasing the buffer links between the surrounding office and industrial uses to the north and the northeast was, was larger. So before, we were looking at about a 20-foot buffer space between the back of these lots to the office parcel northeast. And now we're about 40 feet away from their property line. And then additionally, due north of the male kiosk kind of area you're seeing there on the industrial, we are about 140 feet away now with the back of these lots. Next slide. So I did want to take some time to kind of highlight and call out. So these are the Preliminary Final PUD Plan Minor Amendment Criteria within the Land Development Code in the Town of Monument. And I wanted to take a little bit of time to focus on this just to kind of walk or help walk through with the commissioners of the process we kind of took when looking to make this application. Of course, you can kind of see there are two specific ones, number four and six, that are highlighted in red. Those are the two ones that we worked with town staff on and the town attorney in terms of interpretation and how they are applied as code. And those were the two ones that were kind of the tipping point from this being a minor amendment, administrative approval, to thus being a major amendment, which is what we ended up on and requiring Planning Commission and then ultimately town council approval for this application. I did want to kind of point out with number four. So that one is a decrease and there's only a minimum lot size decrease of about 10% across the board of the eight lots we are adjusting. That kind of differed in range between and we were over that 10% threshold. But I did kind of want to focus in on that, that last sentence of it as well, where with the reduction of these minimum lot sizes, we are not looking to add any more lots to this prelim PUD Site Plan. We are just merely looking to change the A lots that are already approved. There will be no additional lot added. And then number six, number six kind of proved to be a little bit of a tricky one as opposed to just maybe removing a couple of callouts or labels on a plan that wouldn't be deemed, you know, a substantial text change. As Jeff pointed out, we did need to redo the R4 PUD development standards for this PUD Site Plan. And so between our correspondence with the town attorney and town planning department, we did deem changing a PUD development standard was a substantial text change. Therefore, also making it the second minor amendment criteria that we were not able to fulfill with this application. Next slide. And then this is just a continuance of the 15 minor amendment criteria. As you can see, none are highlighted red. None were applicable to this application, just four and number six. Next slide. And then another topic that we discussed with the town planning department, obviously, as we are looking to make this application and revise this to match the ultimate final plaque condition, we definitely wanted to make sure D.R. Horton, the home builder in this part of Willow Springs Ranch had units that fit on the revised lots. We did not want to go through the application process and then get through it all and then figure out, we don't have anything to build on it. So one by one, we went through all eight lots and worked with D.R. Horton and some of their in-house representatives to figure out what units that they have buildable. And here is a couple of examples of those, those lots and kind of how they function and all eight, they do have units that fit all eight lots. Next slide. And in closing, I just wanted to see if there were any questions for me. And then also, I do have Kate Varnum with me here today. She works for Drexel Burrell, the civil engineer and surveying company that assisted our team on this application.
Thank you. If we have questions, we'll ask them after we hear the public hearing. At this point, I will open the public hearing. We have anybody present that wants to speak?
I've un muted the mics for everyone in attending virtually. So if you'd like to speak, please go ahead.
We have anybody online? No one present, no one online wanting to speak? I'll close the public hearing on this item. This point, I will.
This, sorry. This all looks fine. This is housekeeping. You said at the beginning of your presentation that you had a PUD plan approved in 2008. There was no PUD plan, this hadn't been annexed yet. I was here then.
Staff will double check.
Any other questions?
I have one for staff. So is there going to be any language in here that specifically states only those eight lots can go down to 4,200? Or can the whole entire development go down that far? If and so they change their mind.
As of right now, that application that has, it's been presented to us does not suggest that kind of language.
Okay, and they could actually change their mind, correct? And go down to 4,200 on all lots if they wanted to?
According to this approval, yes, they could. There are filings that are already done. There is densities in place that have to be put in place. So as far as, you know, the number of units, they wouldn't be able to provide or increase the lot units. Does that make sense?
Yep. Thank you.
I was wondering if there was any consideration given to just reducing the number of lots in that area? Is that, was that feasible or?
I, I did not have any of those conversations with D.R. Horton. I think with the final plat being approved, with the lot line adjustment, their hope was to obviously rectify the PUD Site Plan to match so that they were developable. That was obviously the end goal, but there were no specific conversations with me about just omitting eight lots completely. And then I think one item back to Commissioner Collins as well, specifically with that application question. Although we're redoing the R4 development standards, this current application only highlights eight lots. And so is my understanding that if additional lots within this filing wanted to be, go down to 4,200 as well, that would then require another major, another major amendment application. And then also with that, it would also require the final plat to be updated as well because those are kind of seamless between the two or they should be. And so it's, I don't think it's just as simple as someone going in and immediately reducing a lot size down to 4,200 because we are specifically talking about these eight within the filing.
Yeah, thank you for that, too. That was, my other concern was setting a precedent for other lots in that development.
There would be two, two more applications that would have to be revised.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion?
Can you bring up a motion?
Before we, before we make, before we do that, is there some way that we, to address Commissioner Collins' concern about, just to make certain that we're covered, that this is only applicable to these eight lots? I just wanted to see if someone would be comfortable including that in the, in the motion? If we should do that or not.
This is Commissioner Egley. I move that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the Willow Springs Ranch Preliminary Final PUD Major Amendment Number One, based on the findings that the proposed PUD major amendment is in conformance with the review and approval criteria as outlined in the Town of Monument Land Development Code with the addition or the the inclusion of the, that this applies only to these eight lots and not to any other lots within the Willow Springs development.
Collins, seconds.
Roll call, please.
Vice Chair Hours.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Egley.
Yes.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
At this point, before we hear the continuance of the public hearing related to the Dobbs Development Group LLC for a preliminary final plat at the Zill at Jackson Creek Preliminary Final Plat, I would like to ask our town attorney to make appropriate comments prior to this hearing.
Turn my mic on first. Mr. Chair and Planning Commission members, I would recommend at this point, we convene a short executive session pursuant to 2464024B. For a conference with myself, your your attorney. For purposes of receiving specific legal questions related to this application. And if if you are so inclined to motion just in that, you know, without that language. Convene an executive session pursuant to 2464024B for conference with your attorney for legal questions related to the Zeal application. That would be appropriate.
I believe as chair, I would have the right to call for an executive session.
It requires a motion and a second and a vote. And you have to have at least two thirds of all commissioners vote in favor for us to convene that. Unless everybody votes yes or no.
Do I hear the motion?
I'll make that motion with the appropriate language. I'm not going to repeat it.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Vice Chair Hours.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Egley.
Uh, no.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Motion passes four in favor, one opposed.
Okay, I'm going to the. Executive session is closed and I'm going to. Now open up the meeting to continue the hearing. The request by Adobe Doyle Development Group LLC for a preliminary final plat known as Zeal. At Jackson Creek preliminary slash final plat.
Thank you, Chair Hours. Staff will be reading from the PC. Report that was provided from staff for this continuance. In the memorandum, the background, staff and applicant. Presented a preliminary final plat for Zeal at Jackson Creek to the Planning Commission at the November 8th, 2023 Planning Commission Meeting. Staff presented findings stating that the staff has reviewed the subject application and analyzed the applicable criteria for sections 180250. And 260 of the Town and Monuments Land Development Code. The comprehensive plan based on staff's analysis. The proposed project is consistent with all applicable development standards and adequately addresses all criteria. And the application is generally consistent with comprehensive plan. The only outstanding item does this plat application need to accommodate more right of way for Higbee Road. Chair Trujillo requested a continuance. The commissioners hours seconded the motion. Roll call was in favor five and one against. Four major questions were asked by the commissioners on this continuance. One, PC wants more information on the Higbee Road and was being provided by the Tribe View to justify the proposed right of way of 95 feet versus 120 per code. Second question, PC wants more time for reviewing and revisiting the staff report. Better understand how the proposed plat and our right of way are interconnected. Third request was PC would like to separate out the issues of one Higbee Road, two, the plat, and three, the zoning. PC requested the city attorney attend the next PC public hearing either in person or online. To answer whether conditions of approval can include recommendations on zoning and land use, see memorandum from town attorney. Additional parties that are involved besides the town and the applicant include Tribe View Metro District, the School District number 38, and Creekside Development CSI. The discussion, the sole question holding up approval from the code criteria perspective asks. How much right of way should the town request for Higbee Road from the applicant in this preliminary final plat application? For purposes of this continuance, the key items to consider are Higbee Road is concurrently a 70 foot right of way. The town has roadway criteria manual that indicate identifies the necessary right of way with. Necessary for specific roadway classifications that was last updated in 2010. Most municipal jurisdictions have an adopted functional roadway classifications map to identify what roadway class roads in their jurisdiction and ownership should be. The Town of Monument does not currently have an adopted functional classification map and therefore does not have an identified roadway classification for Higbee Road. The town has have, does have an unofficial C dot H U T F highway users tax fund classification table from 2022. That identifies Higbee Road as a minor arterial. The H U T F is not an officially used reference tool by licensed traffic engineers in the state for roadway design and construction. Nor is it any reference tool used by metropolitan jurisdictions in the state to determine roadway classification. El Paso County is currently upgrading their countywide roadway transportation master plan and acknowledges Higbee Road as a lesser classification of a major collector. While the county's future roadway classifications map for 2040 to 60 identified Higbee Road as a rural minor arterial. El Paso County roadway standards require a hundred foot right of way for their rural minor arterial classifications. The Town of Monument roadway criteria manual requires 120 foot right of way for a minor arterial and a 90 foot right of way for a major collector. Tribe View and CSI, Higbee Road roadway expansion and the widening design contemplates a 95 foot road section. Utilizing the existing Higbee Road 70 foot right of way with an additional 25 foot public use access easement to achieve the 95 foot. Feet and proposing the following, an attached detached sidewalk on the north side of Higbee Road. Detached eight foot sidewalk for pedestrian and bicyclists on the south side of the road. Roundabouts at the south entrances to Lewis Palmer High School and Bowstring. Four traffic lanes with a median and five north-south ped bike crossings between Jackson Creek Parkway and Cloverleaf Road. Along the east side of Jackson Creek Parkway, west and east sides of Lewis Palmer's roundabout and the west and east side of Bowstring Road. The Tribe View roadway design is actively under review with the town engineers, Jacobs and other relevant referral agencies, but has yet to have been approved. All traffic studies for Higbee Road, including the Zeal at Jackson Creek preliminary final plat. And the parcel east of Zeal proposed plat, as well as anticipated volumes for other active and proposed developments along Higbee Road. Were all reviewed by town engineers and the Town, Town and Monument Public Work Staff to ensure regardless of the design. The necessary right of way appropriate for size, function and capacity at full buildout of the Higbee Road corridor by the year 2040. All of their professional findings recognize that a right of way of 120 feet will be able to accommodate any roadway design for Higbee Road. That will function at an acceptable level at full buildout, traffic volumes anticipated for the Higbee Road corridor. Additional information. On November 29th, 2023, Jim McGrady, District Manager, Tribe View Metropolitan District emailed the town CSI and Lewis Palmer High School, providing a summary. Of discussions between all the parties that occurred since the November 8th Planning Commission Meeting. Tribe View proposes essentially a solution to meet the request of 120 feet for Higbee Road right of way. By one, expanding the proposed 25 foot public use easement on the south side of Higbee Road by an additional five feet. To a 30 feet wide public use easement. And second, acquiring an additional 20 foot public utility easement on the north side of Higbee Road to achieve the desired 120 feet. David. Dobie Development has agreed to provide the additional five feet. Which is represented in the revised plat provided for this continuance. With that, town staff's finding is after review of the additional information provided. Staff finds the application for the preliminary final plat for Zeal at Jackson Creek meets all criteria for sections 180250 and 18260. Of the Town and Monuments Land Development Code and Comprehensive Plan. Should this application be approved by Planning Commission and Town Council, staff will put a condition on the planning director's signature for plat. Based on receiving the recorded agreements for both the 20 foot public use easement along the north side of Higbee Road. And the 30 foot public use easement on the south side of Higbee Road from Jackson Creek Parkway to Cloverleaf Road. Bear with me, I'm just bringing up certain specific things for your reference. The question of what the concept drawing is for. Higbee Road that Tribe View and the and CSI are proposing. Is right here. You'll notice this is the Jackson Creek Parkway intersection with Higbee Road. Here's the roundabout. At at Bowstring right here and the one near the school. The proposed. Public use easements are shown here. Doesn't read so well, but you can see that there is 20 feet on the north side being proposed. Oops. Bear with me here. Technical difficulties. 70 feet represents the existing right of way. 30 feet represents the now. Now public use. Easement that Zeal and Dobie Development has agreed to account for in their application. And the 20 feet that Tribe View and CSI are coordinating with the School District. To acquire on the north end to get the full 120 feet. Page 17. Is a representation showing you that Zeal's final plat does indeed provide the 30 foot access and utility easement. Along Higbee Road and it does go the entire. Way from Bowstring over to the eastern boundary. And. For clarification. They've provided this exhibit to show again, the 20 foot on the north side and the 30 on the south side for the record. Staff will also read, is going to pull from. The PowerPoint presentation of. The presentation that was done back on November 8th, we're going to bring up the slide for the review criteria. And I will go through that with you and provide you staff's findings on each of those for our record. Bear with me. The only difference between the criteria of section 1802260 and 250 is notice that 250 is nine criteria. And 60 is 10 criteria. They are identical criteria other than the 10th one 460, which is. That the final plat is generally consistent with the preliminary plat as applicable. Now I will read into the record staff's findings for this review approval criteria. Criteria number one, the plat conforms with the town's comprehensive plan, parks, trails and open space plan and other plans adopted by the town from time to time. Staff finds that the parks and recreation, open space, open lands, trails designation is acknowledged. They connect into an overall system by sidewalks, bike paths, trails, streams and drainage ways. The north part of the parcel off of Higbee Road provides a sidewalk to the regional trail system. It connects into an overall system by sidewalks, bikes, pathways, trails, streams and drainage ways by. The neighborhood is connected throughout the ample sidewalk and the bike paths that connect to a trail system. A sidewalk along both Higbee Road and Bowstring Road connect to Jackson Creek Boulevard. Where there are ample local services. It also provides for active and passive recreation. The neighborhood provides ample areas with drought for active recreation and also quiet spaces for passive recreation. Create major off-street trail systems from County Line Road along east or west side of I-25 connecting Jackson Creek Parkway, Baptist Road and Fox Run. The north part of Higbee Road provides a sidewalk to the regional trail system. It provides central parks that provide community gathering areas and activity areas. And the development provides a central park in the heart of the neighborhood at the amenity center for residents to gather and enjoy outdoor activities. Single family detached is connected by sidewalks and trails. North part of the parcel off of Higbee Road provides a sidewalk to the regional trail system. This community of townhomes and duplexes with community amenities, center, dog park and green spaces designed to promote movement, wellness and community. The community encompasses a total of 20 acres, including a wetland preservation area of 39 acres and 1.75 acres of open green space. Parcels designed as a single family detached and residential attached and conforms with the Monument Future Land Use Map. It is located to east of Jackson Creek Parkway between Highway 105 and Baptist Road. Criteria number two, the plat proposes a harmonious development and lot pattern that is compatible with the neighborhood and community. Again, what's proposed is single family detached. Residential attached. And the lot pattern of the parcel meets with the community's overall character. Criteria three, the lot and development pattern ensures there will be adequate light, air, parks, open space and other places for public use. Staff's finding is that all of that is. Is found in this application. Fourth criteria, plat design provides for adequate access to all lots and tracks proposed in the subdivision. Staff's finding is that through the connections of Higbee Road and through Bowstring. That those connections and adequate access are provided for all the lots and tracks proposed in the subdivision. Criteria number five, adequate, safe and effective public improvements, utilities and community facilities and services will be provided with sufficient capacity to serve the subdivision. Sufficient supply of water has been preserved for the community through the Tribe View Metropolitan District and Zeal. Will bear the cost of developing the infrastructure required to support the development through both direct investment and assessed impact fees. B, the site infrastructure will be designed and constructed to accommodate. The proposed development plans are underway to extend utilities to the community, providing residents with water, sewer, electric. And telecommunications, fiber optic services. Zeal bear the cost of developing the infrastructure required to support development through both. Direct investment and assessed impact fees. Criteria six, the plat design provides for adequate protection from fire, flood, geological hazards and significant soil and restraints. And other dangers and provides for proper design of stormwater drainage, erosion control and streets. Design of the development provides necessary access for fire trucks and the stormwater drainage has been designed to conform to the stormwater best management practices inspections and maintenance plan. Criteria seven, the plaque conforms to all applicable provisions of those regulations and any other applicable provisions of the Monument Municipal Code. And all applicable county, state and federal regulations. The development has been designed to conform with the Town and Monuments, Tribe View Metro District, Pike's Peak Regional Building Department, El Paso County, State of Colorado and federal regulations. Following the local, regional and national guidelines, Zeal will put plans in place to protect and any endangered species or native vegetation. Existing on the site during and after development. Plans will also address the natural hazards to current and future residents, including the wildlife prevention, erosion control and protection from flooding. Criteria eight. The plat design provides for the preservation and conservation of unique or distinctive natural areas, scenic areas and views, natural landmarks, including rock outcroppings and unique landforms. Significant wildlife habitats and mitigation areas, drainage areas, repairing areas, wetlands, historic features and archaeologically sensitive sites. Recognizing the irreplaceable character of such resources and their importance to the quality of life in Monument. Zeal intends to go beyond the minimum standards and regulations to provide a remarkable environment for living. In the plat, you'll notice that there is a drainage easement put in place to deal with the existing wetlands on the site and staff finds that this criteria has been met. The plat design provides for the preservation and conservation of significant stands of vegetation. This criteria is not applicable because there are no active or. Physical stands of vegetation on site. It is merely grassland. Criteria 10, the final plat is generally consistent with the preliminary plat as applicable. This completes staff's criteria review. And staff finds that the application for that approval and criteria has been met. Those are our findings. Thank you.
Does the applicant have any? Comments to make at this point?
Hearing no further comments from staff or the applicant, I'll open up for the public hearing. Is there any present that wants to speak? Is there anybody online that wishes to speak?
At this time, I want everyone online to know that your mics are allowed and if you would like to speak, please do so. At this time, I don't see anyone interested and so I'm going to continue.
No one present speaking and no one online. I'll close the public hearing. At this point, I will. Open it up for prior commission discussion. Part commissioner's discussion, but I want to, I want to make a couple of comments before we do that. I think we need to keep in mind that this is part of the Regency Park Overlay zoning district and it specifies the uses for the zeal. At Jackson Creek property. We do not have the same latitudes to place conditions on approval as we have had on applications. For which we would also later approve a PUD. Unlike many other applications we receive once this preliminary final plat is approved by the council. We will no longer see and be afforded the opportunity to comment on the site plan. And other activities related to the development. Those activities become the responsibility of the planning department staff with the approval of the council. And as you know, the planning department staff must work within the applicants. With the applicant of following the ordinances approved. Zoning and other town plans. Therefore, if we have legitimate community concerns that we would. Under other circumstances, be able to place conditions on the approval. We need to understand that our, our objections must be cited. Related to the code. Having said that. I would ask that our comments first relate to the. Higbee road. Extension. So that we can come to consensus that we're satisfied as a commission. With that, and then we can talk to the details of the zeal. Is that fair enough? Questions?
This is Commissioner Agley. I have several questions regarding the proposed agreement. With Triview. Lewis Palmer District thirty-eight and the applicant. On the right of way. So I'm not sure. If the applicant can answer some questions. It's all related to the cost of the construction of the. Of the four hundred and fifty foot lane, turn lane on leather chaps that Triview is proposing to build. Along with the painting and labor of the two waiting lanes. My question is, is Zeal providing the funding for that construction?
You're going to speak, please come up to the microphone.
Hi, Rob Oldak with Jackson Creek CSI Development. I don't know that I can say I'm representing the applicant Zeal. I think you know we're the land, landowner and selling land to Zeal. I'm unfamiliar with any arrangements between Triview and Zeal on what's happening on leather chaps. I could. Surmise that. The Triview District is taking that under advisement in a hearing. To decide whether or not that's something they want to do. Because there were discussions with District thirty-eight. And since District thirty-eight. Was asked to give something up so that Triview could build the hundred and twenty foot. Or provide the hundred and twenty foot right of way. That they would ask that Triview provide them something that they needed. That being the turn lane on leather chaps. So that's about all I know about that.
Okay, thanks. Well, my concern is that. An agreement has been reached, but. The developer is essentially giving up nothing. And, and getting what they need. And the right of way is established at a hundred and twenty feet. But the individuals that are impacted directly economically. Are those people in the Triview Metro District. And I don't see that that impact is being offset by zeal. That's my comment.
I think I can address a little bit of that. Jim McGrady is the administrator for Triview and he has been heavily involved in this. And once again, I'll remind you that the Town of Monument has no responsibility for the widening of that financially. It will all be on Triview. And so he's been negotiating with the school district and with. I think the developer on obtaining that hundred and twenty foot.
Just to let you know that we're giving up thirty feet on, on our side of the property in addition to the school district, giving up. Twenty feet presumably under this agreement. And that further the entire cost of. The improvements are being passed through from Triview. To the developer. Through the infrastructure funding agreement, which we sent to the town attorney in June of twenty twenty-one.
You, you mean the, the infrastructure costs, including the improvements to be made by Bear Creek Elementary?
No, obviously that wasn't contemplated in twenty twenty-one.
All right.
Thank you.
So with regard to the commissioners, then are we? Comfortable with what's been presented to us with regard to the resolution of the right of way? Okay, at this point. I'll open it up for questions. Related to these actual. Preliminary plat.
Bob, I have a question for Bob. Hi. My question is. When I look at this subdivision, I see some public easements. Is, is there not going to be anything else that's public? No public streets? I know you're not the developer. I'm sorry, the developer isn't here to answer. No public streets, no public parks, no public open space. The only public items on this subdivision are the utility easements.
That would be my understanding.
Yes, staff will also let you know that the, the applicant for the preliminary final plat is actually online.
Okay.
If you wanted, if you wanted to ask him some questions.
That question would be, I didn't know that. Thanks, thank you.
Jeff, this is Jim Dobie. Did you want me to respond?
Please.
You know, right now. I think we're talking about the, the plat and the preliminary plat and we've worked on our. Initial site plan and preserve the, the wetlands. As open space, but it's not, it's not public open space. And then there's, there's the sidewalks that go around along on Bowstring. So. But no, it's, there's no. Public open space through the, through the center of the property because that that's reserved for. The residents of the property to, for their. You know, a good, safe resident experience. And so that's, that's the current thinking.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hours, I, could, could you pull up? In the. Slides that you had related to the COC plan. That covered steps one through two.
There are a number of slides, so. I'll just walk through them as quickly as I can, just to kind of.
That's what I'll actually. I want to try to go through it quickly, so I'll. I, I just want to point out certain things that you have on there and we'll move on.
Certainly.
If you would go down, let's see. To the one. That talks to the FLUM. Which is.
Yes.
Step one.
Yep, the flu.
Okay. In this. Because I want to make sure I understand this project. When we were here the last time. And we continued this, I want you to understand. That we continued it because this project is something that was brought to us. In a manner that we haven't had to deal with in the many years that we've been on it. Okay? So our, our, we're not trying to make it difficult. What you want to do, but we're trying to understand what you want to do because one of our responsibilities. As a planning commission. Is to review projects for the community. And if the concerns about that were to express that, but. This particular project. Permits us or does not permit us. To do things that we might otherwise do with other projects. So please, it's not. You that we're, we're trying to make difficult for. It was that we didn't clearly understand. What our latitudes were and that's why we had the attorney here. So I want you to understand. That as I go through this, I'm going through it in the same manner that I would go through it. Primarily. If we had other options so that the citizens know that we have in fact reviewed this. We have looked at their concerns. That you understand what their concerns are and that as it's developed. Hopefully those concerns will be addressed in the best manner that you can address them. Having said that. On this one, it indicates that you're, based on the highlights, and that's what I want to understand, you're building patio homes. And townhomes. On the property. Is that correct?
Yes, once, once again, this is Jim Dobie and I, I do apologize. I wasn't able to be there tonight, but I, my. My teenager took me out at the knees with a cold, so.
Yeah, I appreciate you being online. Thank you.
Yeah, of, of course. Yes, patio homes and townhomes. You know, it, it's, you know, I'd say the. You know, the, the, the planning that has been done in this area, I think is, is, you know, very, very solid and it has developed. You know, over the decades. You know, in a nice manner with density. Occurring and, and getting a little heavier as you move. Closer to the commercial areas. And so, you know, our, our project is. Really taking some cues from right across the street from Higbee. Being of a similar, similar sort.
Next slide, please. Now, on the, on the visions. You've covered all those. And next slide, please. Again, on the values. Again. Next slide, please. Community viewpoints. You highlighted the citizens would like to see the interconnectivity. I would like to point out again as a commissioner and as, as one that's looking at the comprehensive plan. That there is concerns within our community that have been expressed in the twenty seventeen comprehensive plan. That rental housing availability in the monument area may do. Not favor the development of additional rental housing. And the citizens in area residents are mindful that a broader, broader range of housing opportunities important to local economy. But many simply do not like multifamily housing. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Staff finds that the proposed preliminary final plat being more likely consistent. Instead of less likely consistent with the viewpoints of the comprehensive plan. I have to agree with that, except for those two items that I pointed out there. Go to step two. At the. Elements process. Next, next slide. Would be, yes. LU two. Where's LU two?
LU two is a, is a policy.
LU.
Not, not an opportunity.
I want to speak to that one for a minute. Encourages transitions between dissimilar land uses using increased setbacks. Feathering densities, landscape buffers, native planting. Berms and mutual agreed upon transitional setbacks between zones of different land uses and densities. That's not highlighted as something that you were intending to do. But. What you are. Proposing is dissimilar. To what's adjacent to it. Adjacent. To this particular development. Are. Six hundred to million dollar homes. In the comments that Mr. Dobie just made earlier. Your development is going to be closed off. And people that are living right adjacent to it are not going to be able to come in. Use the gardens and use the other amenities that you have. So my question is. Are there not going to be any transition between? The adjacent properties and your property?
Let's see, so I, I can respond to all of that. You know, we're, we're very respectful of the comprehensive plan and everything that, you know, the Town of Monument is, is doing and continues to do in this neighborhood. You know, this, this unlike some apartment communities that might have be fully gated. This is not a gated community. So while the, the streets and the sidewalks. Are private and are being put in it, you know, the developers cost. You know, once again, the sidewalks are, you know, it's not a gated community. So it's a, it's porous. And people can move through the community, but. You know, but individuals have. Will be using these raised beds. And so I'm assuming that. You know, if, if people just started wandering on private property and started using other people's raised beds and putting. Chemicals and other things on it. I mean, that's just, that's just not acceptable. So, so no, these, these amenities are for the, the private use of the residents that are paying to live there. But, but if, if there's, if the neighborhood, some of the folks, you know, in the new subdivision or across the street. Want to walk through this to get to the, you know, the senior living center that's, you know, four stories. And, and much more dense. I mean, they can certainly do that if they. and, and much more dense, I mean, they can certainly do that if they want to ride their bike through here and get to the retail shopping center, they certainly can do that as well.
Okay, oh, thank you very much.
If you'd like to speak to the transitional.
Yes, please, please, okay.
Spoken of the differentiation between the zoning of the PRD six land adjacent to this parcel and this land, which is PRD ten. And what I believe and understand is that the, the zoning designations within the Town of Monument span from PRD two, the largest lots, to PRD four, PRD six, PRD ten, PMD, and then PCD, PID. So the, the two zones that are next to each other, the PRD six that you referenced with the homes and the PRD ten are the, there is no in-between, they're, they're not making a jump between, you know, leapfrogging over another zone. That is the transitional zone from less dense housing to more dense housing as you get to the commercial centers. And this, of course, is what has been contemplated in the Regency Park zoning since 1988. So it's consistent with that, at least, I wanted to point out.
It's not within our rent.
Yeah, Woodmore Park is El Paso County. It's not in the Town of Monument. Not the, I, I can't answer that question. We never received any referral for that.
That are adjacent to the ones that you're building are all traditional new construction. Will all your homes be traditional new construction? Or are you planning to use any manufactured homes?
Let's see, so the, the mic was a little light there, but I think the question was, is are we planning on using manufactured homes or more traditional site-built type homes?
Yes, sir.
Yes, and so the, it's, it's not a manufactured home type product. It's, it's more traditional site, but still, excuse me, site-built homes.
So a, as the current owner, Mr. Dobie, would you commit to no manufactured homes?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that very much, and I know our citizens will appreciate that very much. The other concern that I have is with regard to multiple family dwellings. Currently, you're not planning on putting any apartments in there? Is that a, a plan that you've got set in your mind not to change?
Let's see, so the, you know, the current plan is for, you know, a wellness living community, which, which is, you know, a step down from like active adult. So it, these are, these are rental homes. You know, one and two-story rental homes. And so I'm not quite sure, you know, I'm just concerned a little bit about semantics on apartments. But so I want to make sure that I don't, you, you know, we don't feel like I'm giving you a bait and switch here. But, you know, the, the current plan is, is for rental homes where, you know, the, the, the resident themselves has either a one or two-story home. So a, a single story or a town home, but, but nobody's living on top of each other. So no, no stacked flat type configurations is, is not currently in the, in the program.
Yeah, and, and those are clearly not apartments.
Okay.
And, 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 you know, but one of the, one of the uses that is authorized in that area are what they call garden apartments. And garden apartments can be, and since there's a thirty-five cent foot height, garden apartments can be two stories buildings that have multiple units in them versus the type of construction that you're currently talking about. And that, that's why I beg that question. And, and, and you're saying you don't plan on garden apartments?
Correct, Chairman, yes.
Okay, thank, thank you very much for that. I appreciate you, your position on manufactured homes. I would ask the town manager, who is now today the planning director.
I'm not the planning director yet. I'm still the town manager.
Or, or legal. Can, can we document Mr. Dobie's position that there would not be manufactured homes on the property?
Yeah, I think if he's willing to do that.
He indicated willingness, and so however that can be made to happen, can, can you see that it's made to happen subsequent to this meeting or during the meeting? How do we do it?
Well, I, I think, I think what we're talking about is a voluntary agreement to not, not utilize those products. So we wouldn't want to make it a condition of approval.
That's great, that's great.
We would simply get, get together with the purchaser, with the landowner, and put together a voluntary agreement that would be recorded with the approvals.
Mr. Dobie, are, are you agreeable to that?
Yes, we can work with the, the landowner on, on that. Because that, of course, that's, you know, it's, it's a tri-party agreement between the town and myself and, and the landowner.
Thank, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Were there any other?
Hold on one second, Rob, I want, the, it would only be voluntary. It, it's not something we would require. It would only be voluntary and the landowner and the, the user would have to agree to it. And.
No.
No.
It is, it is not a condition.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep. Right, yeah.
I, I would envision it, if you agree, voluntary. But we, we end up with this agreement, then it would be recorded with the plat approval, but it's not a condition of approval.
Right.
I guess I'd have to ask you at this point, do you have difficulty with an agreement like that? Mr. Mr. Dobie has indicated he is okay with agreement like that. But I have concerns that maybe you're not.
I think it's a question of timing when that agreement goes into effect. You know, we probably have to have a land use attorney kind of give us some advice on that. It's a little unusual, nothing at least I've ever done. I'm happy with the concept. I'd like to satisfy your concerns. But I think timing and mechanics and some legal advice would be needed. I certainly don't have any intent like standing in the way of that agreement, but it's something that'd have to be worked out, what that really looks like. I hope that's an acceptable answer. I, I'm not trying to be on the fence here at all, just, just not sure what the implications are of that type of agreement. Because the way attorneys think, right, is like, well, that's fine now, but what about the next guy that owns it or whatever, you know, down the road, what, there, there are questions that I think my attorney would have for the town attorney. So I, I'd like the opportunity at least put them in touch to make sure that, that those are addressed. You know, sure, I'm, I'm, I have no problem with the, the concepts that Mr. Dobie is attempting to satisfy your concerns. We would share that as well.
And, and to the commission, I, I think the town attorney and myself and, and the developer and, and land user could all get together and, and pound out an agreement on this and bring that back to the council.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions related to the?
I, I had a question.
For this exercise?
Yes.
This is Commissioner Eglie. Mr. Dobie, I'm sorry, I didn't realize you were online earlier when I posed my question regarding the construction of the turn lanes of Bear Creek Elementary. My question is, I know you were in agreement with that proposal. Will you be contributing any funds to the cost of the construction of those turn lanes at Bear Creek Elementary?
We've, we've been working with the Metro District on that. And then, of course, you know, we're going to be a party to the Metro District and paying, paying our, our mill levy into the Metro District for, for quite a while. So I'd say yes.
All right, thank you.
The other questions. Hearing none, do I hear a motion?
This is Green. I move that the planning commission approve the ordinance in favor of a request by Dobie Development Group LLC for a preliminary final plat known as Seal at Jackson Creek Preliminary Final Plat. Subject to a voluntary agreement to be worked out between the parties, the landowner, the developer, and the town to certify, guarantee that the development will not be using manufactured housing. Not a condition, but that it be looked into.
Hearing no second. We can't put it on as a condition.
Okay.
The gentleman, Mr. Dobie, has indicated his willingness to, to work out an agreement with regard to that. This gentleman there has indicated that he's willing. So that will be handled by the staff, by the lawyers, without any conditions.
Could I amend my motion?
Clearly, please.
All right. I move that the planning commission approve the ordinance in favor of a request by Dobie Development Group LLC for a preliminary slash final plat known as Seal at Jackson Creek Preliminary Final Plat. Period.
Do I hear a second?
I have one question before the second. Do we need to put a caveat on there to get the right-of-way agreement done before, or along with that?
Staff has put in, put a caveat down for our signature on the plat that we will not sign the final plat until a recorded agreement is put in place that acknowledges the public use easements on either side of Figueroa to encourage or to ensure the 120.
Do you second the?
I'll, I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Thank you. Vice Chair Hours.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Eglie.
No.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Motion passes for in favor, one opposed.
With that being said, that, I hope you gentlemen have a very Merry Christmas. Mr. Dobie, thank you for being online and for your hearing and understanding of our community's interest, and we look forward to your development.
Thank you for that, Chairman, and all the chairpersons, and, and I'm sorry, councilors. And, you know, we're, we're, we're excited about this, and I think, I think everybody will be very pleased working with the landowner very constructively. They're, they're a very sophisticated party, and, and they, they know what they're doing. And they're, they're looking out for monuments' interests. So we're, we're all excited about it.
Thank you. Okay, going to the next agenda item. Any non-agenda public items, I will open that up for public comment by anyone that's present and accounted for, or anyone that's online. No one online?
At this time, I don't see anyone online.
Okay, I will close the agenda item related to public items then. And go into reports, communications, announcements, and first, commissioners have any. I don't know. I've got a couple, but I'm going to reserve them for the next meeting because it had to do with things that a planning director should be dealing with. And since we don't have one president accounted for, I'm just going to keep my mouth shut at this point.
And you can always stop by my office and have that conversation, sir.
No, I, I think, you know, my, my, the comments I have are things that a planning director should be addressing. But since the planning director is no longer going to be with us, there's no use in me bringing up points that she will not be able to deal with. So it's a waste of everybody's time. Having staff, does the staff have any?
Just one thing, just want to advise everybody, it is snowing quite hard outside. I just checked. And our snowplows are out. We're clearing streets right now. I think we just cleared the parking lot. But still be very careful, careful leaving the building and as you enter the highways.
Having said that, I wish everybody here a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And thank you all for your participations. And I want to thank the attorney for all the advice and guidance that you gave us. It's very appreciative. And having said that, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
So done.